Order in the House, please. First of all, I want to welcome everybody to the Cava Board of Selectmen's September 25th meeting. After we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like everybody to remain standing for a minute, please. So, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just, I just want to say a few words. We had a tragedy here recently with our Ambassador to Libya and his protective service guards. They were brutally and horrifically murdered for just being American citizens. And I would like to take a moment of silence to remember them. Please join me. May God have mercy on their souls. Thank you. Okay, announcements tonight. There are openings on the following committees: the Cava Cultural Council, Commission on Disability, BDC, Finance Committee, Old Colony Regional Vote Tech School Committee, two positions, Local Housing Partnership Committee, Recreation Committee, ZBA alternate and a Growers representative to the Earth Removal Committee. Please contact the Selectmen's Office for an application. Donations to the Cava Food Pantry can be made at the Council on Aging on Lakeview Street or the Cava Public Library. And again, it's going to be another difficult year. There's a lot of demand, a lot of need. Please dig down deep and see what you can do to help our friends and neighbors.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just mention something.
Absolutely, Mr. Lord.
A citizen grabbed me today, and I think it probably is good to remind people, when we're having our meetings, try to speak and make sure you speak into a microphone, because this citizen said, "It is very frustrating to be in, listening to the meeting and watching it on TV and not hearing the whole conversation." So, this citizen, we're helping. Thank you.
Huh?[145.19][145.19](Laughter). No, he's absolutely true. I don't think we're strict enough in enforcing the rules of people coming up to the tables and speaking into the mics when they have a point to make. You have to remember that not everybody out there knows what we're talking about or know who the players are that are involved, so it's kind of important. But thank you, Dick, for bringing that up and reinforcing that. Tonight, we have a couple of guests with us, Mr. Tom Bartholomew and his team of experts here, and they're going to give us an overview on economics and the discussion of other post-employment benefits. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I introduce Tom?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Jack.
Thomas Bartholomew is the President of Bartholomew &amp; Company. They manage the investments of our trust funds. He's been a registered securities and insurance advisor since 1977, 35 years of experience. He's been involved in municipal finance since 1981, bond underwriting and fiscal advisory, and he worked for Shawmet County Bank in Bankton. He's been in investment advisory since Foreman Bartholomew &amp; Company in 1994. Today, he, his company manages 140-plus clients in municipal government in approximately $1 billion, representing 1,000 clients, municipalities, and private clients. Tom?
Please, by all means. And whoever else you need to come up with is more than welcome.
They look pretty comfortable.[238.12][238.12](Laughter).
It's their chance for 15 minutes of fame.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having us here this evening. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here and address you and appreciate the business that we currently do with the community. As Jack said, we manage money for 140-odd cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Been doing it for a long time and really consider it to be a specialty in the experience that we bring to the table. Jack asked me to come this evening and give comments on what we're expecting in light of the money that we manage for you, comments that I made to a group meeting that we had about a month ago, similar conversation. So, when I made that talk before 100-odd folks out in Amherst, I concentrated on four different pieces: the economy, both domestically and globally, the election, the Tax Act, and the looming fiscal deficit that we've got. So, in no particular order, we're, I really believe that this economy that we're suffering through right now, this is not a cyclical slowdown. We're structuring portfolios as though this is a structural problem that we have in our domestic economy. There are not enough domestic jobs. Jobs drive everything. Employment drives everything. Employment drives tax revenue, and tax revenue drives spending. Many thought, coming out of 2008, that we would have a pretty fast rebound as we normally have out of economic downturns like this, and I think what we're finding out now, going on five years later, that things aren't getting any better, because it's not just a cycle. It's a structural issue. Too many jobs have been exported overseas. We're not employing people as we have. People are going back to work, but they're going back to work at lower salary levels than they have in the past. There are not enough people going back to work, so we look at this 8.2% unemployment rate, but we hear about the people who are not counted, the 14% national unemployment rate. We don't see a lot of it in Massachusetts. Massachusetts has a tendency to be, because the high tech and healthcare and education systems, much better off in employment. So, things are a little better here than they are in other parts of the country. But employment drives housing prices. Housing prices drive the economy. Employment, and tax revenue from employment drives everything you can think of, from automobile sales to vacation sales to discretionary spending and consumer confidence. Consumer confidence is not what we would like it to be. Investor confidence isn't what we would like it to be. Mr. Bernanke has been running the Federal Reserve Bank and adding liquidity to the system since 2008, which is key. I'd say it's a big key to the recovery. We've got, I'm a supporter of what he does. I think if it were not for Hank Paulson running Treasury in 2008 and what Bernanke has done since, we would not want to know what the consequences would have been. The expectation of the Fed buying more Treasuries and buying mortgage bonds is a very complicated thing, but effectively, what it does is devalues the dollar versus other currencies, makes other foreign currencies worth more money, so then the foreign investors can come here and buy securities, buy bonds, buy stocks, buy real estate, buy commodities. And the wealth effect that's created by increased demand for dollar-denominated securities makes us all wealthier, on paper. If we're wealthier, we might have a tendency to spend more money. We may have a tendency to want to employ more people. That's the intent. That's why when he announced QE3 a couple of weeks ago, the third round of quantitative easing, the third round of major securities buying by the Federal Reserve Bank, the markets rallied substantially. It's a short-lived phenomenon. It's a stimulus effect. It's not a structural fix. It's a short-term fix. As I said to my two associates, Dory Hewer and Michelle Nukem, who are here with me this evening over dinner, it'll be a bad day when the Federal Reserve Bank comes in and says quantitative easing is done. If the market rallies a lot on the news that it's coming, I suspect the market will be disappointed when it's over, if we don't fix the structural things in the meantime, if we don't entice employers to build more factories, to create more permanent employment, and to somehow convince retail buyers, retail investors, consumers to have more confidence in the economies. It's difficult. We have, next item, this tax problem coming at the end of the year. You've all heard about the expiration of the Bush tax cuts, the fiscal cliff, as it's being called, coming at the end of the year. It's difficult, as in, for any major employer, any small employer, any businessman, to plan down the road if you don't know what's going to happen with your ability to do business. I think we need to get through this period between now and January. I suspect that Congress was probably going to take this Bush-tax-era thing and kick it into next year. They're going to kick the can down the road one more time and let the next administration, whether it's the current administration re-elected or a new administration and a new Senate and a new Congress, to deal with this thing for the next four years, not for the next 100 days. But we need more clarity. The economy likes clarity. It's difficult to make any long-term commitments when you don't know what the net effect is going to be on the other side. That keeps people from making long-term commitments. So, there's a lot of moving parts here that don't give us a lot of confidence in the economy. When we don't have confidence, we don't take risk. When we don't take risk, we don't borrow money. Banks are being chastised because they don't lend any money. People don't want to borrow any money. Statistically speaking, retail investors are paying down their debt. They're paying off their mortgages. They're paying off their credit cards. They're paying off their automobile loans, which is a good thing. That's what we're taught. We don't want to have any debt. You grow an economy by going into debt. You grow an economy by taking risk. You grow an economy by accelerating your purchasing power. But you don't do that if you don't like what, or you don't like what's coming, or you don't know what's coming. We need investor confidence. We need to be able to kind of get past this next 100 days, 150 days, maybe even through the middle of next year. We haven't had, Congress hasn't passed a budget for something like three and a half years. Would be nice, July 1 next year, to have a little clarity. I mean, I think it would be nice for all of us. It would be nice for the businesses that we work in. It would be nice for the financial markets to at least know what they're dealing with, good, bad, or indifferent, so we can make, create a plan. We are a global economy. We have to be, we have to be thinking about, we always read about what happens in Spain, what happens in Greece, what's happening with the European Union, what's happening, how Germany will or will not bail them out, how Mario Draghi is running the European Union, and will they bail out some of these countries and they won't. It does mean a lot. It means a lot to us every day when managing the billion dollars we manage, because when I wake up in the morning, Asia's open, Europe's open, markets are trading. When I go to bed at night, I'm still looking at what, how markets are going to behave after I've already spent 15 hours today on the road, you know, working on, trying to figure out where I'm going to be positioning clients' money. It's a global economy. It's a global marketplace. It does make a big difference, unfortunately or unfortunately. It does make a difference whether the Greeks want to pay their debt or not, and we have to pay attention to that kind of stuff. I don't want to get into politics. I got an email from a good client of mine in the western part of the state last week and asking me, you know, what, how's the market going to behave if the Democrats get elected in the White House or the Republicans? Who's going to be better for the economy? I don't know. Markets behave very, you know, in a fickle manner. I do know, what I do believe is that it's a secondary effect, in my mind, who gets elected versus the most important thing being is the $16 trillion of federal debt we now have outstanding. It's more important than who gets elected right now. How is our market, how's the globe going to behave if the $16 trillion heads for $17 trillion? How is the world going to behave towards the United States if QE3 has to turn into QE4? How low can the dollar go versus the, it's difficult for me to understand, and I think I'm pretty good in this business, why the euro trades at 1.3 to the dollar. I think it should be on parity, but it's not, because we continue to dilute the value of our currency by printing more money and creating this big fiscal imbalance. We've got a $16 trillion accumulated national debt, and if we don't get our hands around employment and create more tax revenue, my grandchildren are not going to pay that bill off. About, we're going to get, we talked a little bit about OPEB, the other post-employment benefits that, you know, you're dealing, you're considering dealing with. About six years ago, Barron's magazine front cover one Sunday morning when I picked it up in my house was called, they called it "The $1 trillion Pothole," which is the unfunded liability that all cities and towns, there was their estimate, really, of what all cities and towns across the country have in unfunded post-employment benefits to your retirees, healthcare benefits and the like. I don't know whether that's a good number or a bad number, but I know it's a lot of money. It's a trillion-dollar problem on top of the $16 trillion of federal debt, on top of unfunded pension liabilities at the corporate level, big companies who have unfunded pension liabilities, which are trillions of dollars. There's a lot of trillion dissolve, numbers floating around here, a thousand, you know, a trillion's a thousand billion. You know, Bill Gates is worth 50 billion. It's a lot of money. Put it in perspective. There's big issues. There's big uncertainty. We've got this election coming down the line, which adds a level of uncertainty. On top of that, we've got the debt ceiling at the federal level, which we keep on voting to raise more money to stay current. When you do the calculation, the federal government takes in enough money every year to do two things: to pay the interest on the debt and to pay for those social service programs, which some people call entitlements. I'm not sure whether I like that term or I don't like it, but I think we do need to pay for people who can't pay for themselves necessarily, but behind that, we can't pay for anything. We borrow money to run the government. We borrow money to pay for defense. We borrow money to pay for the national parks. We borrow money for everything else. We can only pay the interest on our debt and pay for the entitlement program, Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid. That's it. It's an unsustainable model. You can't run a business that way. I can't run my business that way, and none of us, none of us in the room can run the business borrowing money to meet overhead expenses. So, it has to be a fix. The biggest fix is to get more people to work and get more tax revenue in the door. Getting more people into work gets more people off the unemployment rolls, so it's a good hit on two different fronts, but it's not a quick fix either. Some would like us to have more stimulus. The idea of stimulus I liken to, if I'm ill and I go see a doctor and he gives me a prescription medication of 100 pills, do I run home and take the entire bottle all at once, or do I take one pill a day until I feel better? Takes a longer period of time, but taking it all at once is probably not a great idea. Let's face it. If I take it over a long period of time, it hopefully will work, but I can be impatient at the same time. I want it to work faster. The economy can't work that way. We've tried fiscal stimulus to build roads and bridges and shovel-ready projects and all the rest of it. Hasn't worked yet. We need more structural changes to fix this structural problem. We're not going to fix that with a cyclical cure. So, there's not a lot of good news there. We're managing money today, looking at this $16 trillion debt the federal government's got. We're worried about what happens when this comes, if and when this comes to roost. It doesn't necessarily have to come to roost. People keep, how are they going to unwind the balance sheet? They don't have to. They can hold those bonds to maturity and just let them mature in the portfolio. We don't have to have them in the float necessarily, but it's a big uncertainty. Again, another uncertainty that we have to deal with. We're keeping our durations very short. We're keeping our quality very high. I don't want to put money at risk necessarily. We do like certain asset classes better, the most expensive. The highest-risk asset class to invest in today, in my opinion, are U.S. Treasury securities, because they're so overvalued. Not because I'm worried about the federal government paying me back. I'm going to get paid. But if they're going to pay me zero for 10 years, they're paying me 1.6%, 1.7% today after taxes, that's not a lot of money. I remember in 1981, when I got into the banking business, when interest rates were 20% overnight lending rates, when 10-year Treasuries were double-digit numbers, you know, 13%, 14%, 15%. Many of us remember those mortgages, the first house mortgage that I got at 11%. You know, we were borrowing money at pretty expensive rates after Paul Volcker was trying to reflate the economy. That doesn't necessarily have to happen today. We've learned those lessons, because the Federal Reserve Bank can hold on to the paper, can hold on to the portfolio, and Bernanke continues to tell us not to be terribly concerned about it. I'm trying to talk fast, because I know I'm on a limited timeframe here. These are the kind of things that we have to deal with every day. These are the things that we pay a lot of attention to. This is why 140 cities and towns in the Commonwealth have hired us, because we're, I'm trying to think forward, not just think backwards. I'm trying to make sure that we don't put your money at undue risk, but we provide you with a net return after our fees and expenses that is meaningful enough for you to continue to do business with us. So, I think it makes a difference, if I can give you an endorsement for the OPEB idea. The rating agencies are very interested to make sure that, you're all paying attention to it. And I know you've done the actuarial studies. Jack tells me that we don't know what the results are yet for what your liability looks like. I can tell you that we were with another community today that's within a stone's throw from here that is not terribly dissimilar, and then their liability is $130 million. And that doesn't mean yours is either, but it's, my point is, it's a significant number. It depends upon the age of your population, of your employees. It depends upon what you promised them in your contracts for your teachers and your firefighters and your police, and there's a whole actuarial lifetime study that has to be done. What the rating agencies are concerned about is the fact that you recognize the fact you owe this money. You've committed to it, contractually committed to it, and that, right now at least, they recognize the challenges that we all have, but that you're at least making an effort to throw some money at the problem and setting, what you have to do is adopt that part of the legislation, you know, Section 20, Chapter 32B, by town meeting, vote to establish a trust fund so that you can fund it. And if you put a dollar into it, it would be a good start.
We did do that. We set up the account, but we haven't funded it yet.
I think it was a dollar fifty, though. Was it a buck and a half? Speak that into the microphone, please.[1215.54][1215.54](Laughter). So, anyway, it's important. It's important to fund it. It's important to look at it in some way, shape, or form, and make progress, so that when the rating agencies ask the question, you can tell them, you can shake your head positively and say, "Yeah, we know we got it, and we're doing what we can." It's not enough, the community we were with today, $130 million liability, they've set aside $150,000 so far. So, not going to get very far very fast doing that, but at least they're making the effort. Anyway, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry to take up so much of your time and ramble on like that, but I hope it's been helpful.
Thank you. Very educational. Any questions from the board, or?
I'm just curious about the quantitative easing, real quick. You know, the first and second, the first and second one may have been okay, but how do you feel about the future inflation with doing all this liquidity, you know, giving all this liquidity?
It's a big concern, very, again, the question, you know, will inflation arrive? If you believe what the Federal Reserve Bank Chairman is telling us, is that he can control money supply to keep inflation at bay. And as I said in a moment ago, the risk is if he's written the balance sheet up to $16 trillion, he's bought $16 trillion worth of, we've got $16 trillion with accumulated debt. He's issued debt to buy bonds, on top of the operational deficits that we've got, which are $3 to $6 trillion per year. We're adding to it all the time. So, you know, when you have to refinance all of this debt, if the Chinese decide they don't want to buy the debt, if the foreign investors don't want to buy Treasury bonds at 1% or 2%, what happens? I'm concerned about it. That's why I'm maintaining in my investment portfolios very short durations. I do believe that the mechanisms are in place, that inflation should not become a big issue in the next three to five years. I just have, I'm not going to, no guarantee implied, or offered, for that matter, but I'm going to, you know, I'm going to be, I'm going to not, I'm not going to get dragged into the abyss and start chasing 30-year mortgages at 3% yield levels, because I was here in 1981 when 30-year mortgages were double digits, and we had no national debt the way we do today. This is unprecedented. Others in my field, competitors, I think are chasing yields, they're buying 10- and 15-year securities at 2% yield levels, and then I fear that clients who are allowing that to happen may be vastly disappointed if that train comes around the corner and starts bearing down on us. So, I don't think the view's worth the climb.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Sarah, Jack?
Nope.
Nope. Very enlightening. Thank you.
No, I guess the only thing that occurs to me is when you consider the issues that we have at the federal level financially, you know, cities and towns in Massachusetts have to have balanced budgets. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has to have an annual balanced budget. Our OPEB issue, which is, again, throughout the entire Commonwealth, is going to, is an issue for people, but it sure seems a lot less daunting than the federal problem. And I guess we can only, can't even anticipate right now how that may trickle down in many other ways, but I suspect in order for the federal government to get it together, it's going to have a significant impact financially on the states. I just, and that's, that means us eventually, too. So, I don't know. I don't know when that, that train is going to come around the corner either, but I don't even know how we would prepare for that.
I think what Tom was referring to is the requirement that something be reflected on our balance sheet that's never been there.
Right.
And so, if we have made an effort, not just in opening up the account, but actually starting to put a few bucks in it here and there.
Right. No, and I agree completely. I just, I just think that it's, it's a little demoralizing, listening to your take on the entire issue throughout the country. I guess I'll take our OPEB problem any day if that's the extent of it. We were kind of hoping it's, you know, moving, moving towards next year, whatever, the amounts of money that we can save through transitioning under the new healthcare legislation would be a good. I know a lot of communities are looking at that as a vehicle to start funding OPEB, too, so that might be something that we would look at here within the next year or so.
I didn't, I didn't come in here tonight to give you any hope that this economy was going to get better any time soon.
You may have succeeded.
Thank you.
I think he was telling us the truth, because I don't think the government really is, I think it's probably worse than what they're telling us.
Well, and I think, too, that this is why, when we're all at town meeting or making our own decisions here, that we need to look at it from the federal level on, so we can't stay, you know, focused and narrow-minded. We've got to look at the bigger picture when we're making decisions, and, you know, tightening our belts and putting money in these funds, you know, you shed some light, you know, how serious it is to do that right now, so.
John Adams and myself attended a seminar given by Bartholomew &amp; Company, and came back and talked to Rick, and we did set up that fund with the intent of putting Medicare Part D reimbursement in it, but that never happened, so.
Yeah, and that's going to fall off, too.
Yes.
In terms of a revenue source, so.
Oh, and it starts to impact your borrowing ability. That's, that's going to be a problem.
There's a lot of market pundits out there that talk about the state of affairs and the state of fiscal affairs in municipalities across the country, and they look at Stockton, California, that had filed bankruptcy, and some of the others. We're always, in any economy, good, bad, or indifferent, we're going to find communities who are mismanaged and have issues. I am, I am, a little bit of good news. Statistically speaking, municipality budgets are better, expenditures are better, overheads getting, margins are getting better. There's all tax, real estate tax revenues are increasing, tax collections are increasing. As employment gets better, state income tax receipts get a little bit better, federal income tax receipts get a little bit better, and local distributions get a little bit better. I mean, there's a lot of good things. Unfortunately, GDP growth is only running at less than 2%. So, it's not the robust 3% or 4% growth, we'd like to see, north of 4%, 5%, and 6% growth. We start really getting worried about inflation. But, you know, this next increment of 1% to 2% GDP growth and employment betterment from this published number of 8.2% to 7.2% to 6.2%, boy, wouldn't that be nice? You know, we'd have a lot more money to work with. Things are modestly better. Massachusetts municipalities appear to be pretty good shape. I keep on hearing about credit rating improvements, because you all have tightened the belt early, but again, prior comment, Massachusetts economy is a heck of a lot better than it is a lot of places across the country. So, we're lucky to be where we are, you know, hopefully, we can stay that way.
Well, thank you for that positive little bit.[1663.41][1663.41](Laughter).
Well, I don't, you know, if you follow the Mayan calendar, we don't have to worry about any of this, really, so. It'll all be over in December, and we'll all be at rest.
Yes, there you go.
So, listen, thank you, Mr. Bartholomew, and thank you to your
Thank you very much.
Assistance, and we appreciate you coming down.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if this is the, I didn't want to do it and interrupt their conversation, but I know that not too long ago, our Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, suggested that they are hoping to try to get legislative permission to use the same model as the Plymouth County Retirement Association to help fund the other post-employment benefit situation, and I was wondering, maybe if we could ask the town administrator if he could get an update from Tom O'Brien on that? He said they were trying to get legislative permission to do that, and different program, they want to use the same model, because it's working, so.
I was going to suggest inviting him to a future meeting, because Rick and I had attended a breakfast with him, and they talked about increasing the mortality tables, which would make the unfunded liability go up, so we wanted to get the director, not
We're looking for volunteers to help with that.
We wanted to get the Director of the Retirement Board to come in here and give us some insight, because they have some other funding things that they can do called pension obligation bonds, so we figured we'd have them come in.
I will talk to Tom and see if we can set something up. That would be good, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you, one and all. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is Nathaniel Singer requests to hold a fundraising race for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation on Saturday, May 4, 2013, with a rain date of Sunday, May 5, 2013. I might add that this has not been approved by the, reviewed or approved by the Police Department, so there's going to be a contingency attached to this. But come on up. Tell us about, who you are and what this is all about.
So, my sister has had diabetes since she was six, and I've always wanted to try to find, be able to have more money to research to, for, to find And I've always wanted to try to find, be able to have more money to research to find a cure for diabetes. And I was thinking, come, it was kind of the beginning of this year, that maybe a race in the town would help the town get more publicity, but also help the organization itself. Because I know, I go to school in Carver, and I know that there is a lot of kids in high school right now that have type 1 diabetes. So, it might help them, and it might help the town itself, just overall publicity-wise.
Well, I think that's admirable. And should I surmise that your name is Nathaniel Singer?
Nathaniel Singer, yes, sorry. But, um...
What grade are you in?
I'm in 11th.
11th grade, okay. I think this is admirable.
But also, an idea that I had, especially, I know for juniors and seniors, a big thing is community service. So, maybe also have juniors and seniors or anyone in high school in Carver be able to help with it and get the hours that they need.
Super.
I think it's a great, it's a great idea, because I have type 2 diabetes. And I got it probably 10 years ago. There's a lot of adults in this country that have type 2 diabetes.
Yeah, it wouldn't just be for type 1 or type 2. It's just the Juvenile Diabetes Foundation, so, I mean, they'd have the opportunity to either walk or run, and it doesn't have to be a certain age. I mean, like, we, I kind of set up like an application already that has like a bunch of different age groups and stuff. The course that I was hoping to be able to get is to start at the park right out there and head up Center Street, and then Pond Street, then South Meadow, and then come right back to the park. Hopefully, throughout the day, have live music playing, have different vendors. Obviously, donate for tables, and it would go to the foundation. Trying to think of other things. For the runners, I know that the Juvenile Diabetes Association does a run at Six Flags come next month. And they have, like, Subway and Moe's and stuff donate food. And I was hoping to maybe talk to them also and try to get the same type of thing. Try to get T-shirts for the runners and so forth.
Did still have to check it out with the police chief?
Yeah, you need to get clearance, make sure it's not gonna be an obstruction or a danger to the community.
I think the biggest thing would just be this, like, half-mile area.
I would just add, police and fire chiefs.
Police and fire chief. I think it's an excellent idea. And once you submit the route to the chief and everything, or chiefs, and get the approval from both of them, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with this. You might want to do a little advertising, get over the...
Definitely. Well, I just wanna, I wanna definitely have like a date set for it before we start advertising and getting...
Set up a webpage or something, people can sign up.
Oh, it's already set up. Already, already set.
I'll make a motion, we approve pending approval of the police and fire chiefs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think that'd be an excellent way to go. Then we've made a commitment to you folks. And I like that.
So, what is my next step?
Go to the police and the fire, and all those, and make sure you get all that taken care of. And then, if we vote this, that would kick it in.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Unanimous. You have your date, you're just gonna meet the caviats to that, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, good luck.
You can call our office if you need any help in navigating that.
Okay.
Okay, we'll help you out.
The next item on our agenda is Ms. Alana Byrie requests to be appointed to the Agricultural Commission in a possible vote. Hello, Alana. You gonna come on up and join us? Huh? Either the microphone, your choice. Alana is also one of our animal control officers.
She was hoping to keep that secret.
Was she? All right, tell us what you're doing.
As far as agricultural, I've been to a few meetings, and they asked me if I wanted to be appointed to the position, and I said, sure.
They roped you in, huh?
Pretty much.
Okay. Well, I know you're into agriculture and stuff anyway, so.
I can help Alana a little, because we were feeling that it would be a good idea to have a connection between the Ag Commission and the animal officer in case there was some overlaps, and Alana's the gal.
Very good.
And there's a letter in here from the Ag Commission endorsing her appointment.
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I just wanted to tell Alana how much we appreciate your volunteering for the Ag Commission.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. You can see that we don't have volunteers beating down the door every day, so when we get them, hook, line, and sinker. All right, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alana.
Next up, the Redevelopment Authority requests for a vote to allow remote participation in meetings.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Selectman.
I'm gonna do something that I normally don't do. I'm gonna be very brief. So, I would like to thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for taking my phone call a couple of weeks ago and putting this on the agenda for a discussion of remote participation. We had a very in-depth conversation with the Redevelopment Authority about this. And we had some good, bad, and the pros and cons and stuff like that. And both yourself and me had a nice conversation on the phone about it and how important that I thought that it was to bring it to you guys and have a discussion about this. I think that it's a very valuable asset. I just definitely don't want to see that it's abused. I do agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that this shouldn't be a way of right. It should just be something that can be used for information. We have a lot of people that volunteer for committees, run for boards, get elected to boards. And I think that their opinion counts, whether you agree with their opinion or not. I think it's a very valuable information gathering point, and this would allow us to do that. My two other board members that are sitting there, plus Mr. Franny, who's on our board, have done a lot of homework on this. I think it's a good thing to listen, have them to have their point. I just wanted to thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for entertaining this as a discussion. I know that a lot of other boards are thinking about it, too. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joanna?
Okay, thank you. I think I'm speaking into the microphone. I have a loud voice, anyway. I've asked Jack to pass all that out, and basically what that is, is from the Attorney General's Law, where we stand with remote participation. But first of all, let me explain to you as well, and you know this, remote participation will not be successful without technology. And what's important here for you to understand and know that the town today has gained a huge, huge step in technology. Today, we have a website. Today, we can post agendas. Today, those agendas go automatically to the town clerk. We post meetings. They go automatically to the town clerk. We never had that before. I took the liberty, before I began my dissertation, to write to the webmaster, and namely, that's Steve Dewhurst. And the remote participation really only talks about audio. We don't really need to have the video. Everybody needs to be heard, and everybody needs to hear what's going on. Steve takes it one more step, and he says, I recommend a setup like the following. And by the way, we do have this available to us. He's suggesting the meeting has a laptop with a webcam that has an integrated mic. He goes on to say, the remote attendee has a similar setup. And in the meeting room, project the laptop onto the wall, so all attendees can see the remote attendee. Mind you, we have all this equipment today. The idea is that everybody should be able to see and hear everybody else. You'll want to share documents during the meeting, and also before the meeting. And he says, we have two ways to do this. We can upload auxiliary documents to the meeting, and this is done the same way you upload an agenda, so that opportunity is already available to us. Or you can upload a document to the public file folder. And these documents can be much any type of file, whether it's photos, spreadsheets, or text. Or you can just email the files to the remote attendee. That's probably the more easier way to go. But nonetheless, if you had chose the auxiliary documents or the public file document, it would automatically go forward and be recorded with the town clerk. So, that's a plus. And he says, my plan is to eventually make such meeting easy and almost automatic. Hopefully, in the short term, I'll be able to get meeting room number one set up. I believe this is meeting room number one, set up, so we can easily and automatically accommodate remote participation from two remote locations, or maybe more. So, that's the benefit of that, maybe more. We should be there, as he says, by the end of the year. Then, I'm trying to allocate the funds the website committee has saved to do similar, something similar for the large meeting room in the basement. So, I tell you that already, we're here. We can do audio, no problem. He wants to go one step further and add into the video portion of it. And he's saying by the end of the year, for sure. So, maybe today, 100% what he's saying is not there, but by sure the end of the year, we should be able. So, that's a plus for the town of Carver. In these open meeting guides, I had made the parts yellow, which I think are talking points. I underlined in red, which I think are really, could open up a discussion, but nonetheless, are really important. May a member of the public body participate remotely. And I'm saying, as I highlighted this, members of public bodies have a responsibility to ensure that remote participation in meetings is not used in a way that would defeat the purpose of the open meeting law, namely promoting transparency with regard to deliberations and decisions on which public policy is based. How can the practice of remote participation be adopted? Remote participation may be used during a meeting of a public body if it has first been adopted by the Chief Executive Officer of the municipality for local public bodies. The Chief Executive Officer, in our case, as well, may be the Board of Selectmen. If the Chief Executive Officer in a municipality authorizes remote participation, that authorization must apply to all public bodies in the municipality. But the next line that I highlighted, I think, is important. In addition, the Chief Executive Officer can authorize public bodies in that municipality to opt out of the practice altogether. You have an opportunity. You have that opportunity. What are the permissible reasons for remote participation? Once remote participation is adopted, and this is important, the person chairing the meeting determines that one of the following factors makes the members' physical attendance unreasonably difficult. There are five of them, and they're broad. Personal illness, personal disability, emergency, military service, or geographic distance. What are the acceptable means of remote participation? Acceptable means of remote participation include, now, this is the technology part, telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing, or any other technology that enables the remote participant, and, very important, all persons present at the meeting location to be clearly audible to one another. Not also video, as when I attended the first OML meeting here with the Selectmen, that was one of the remarks. They said it had to be both, but that is not true. What are the minimum requirements for remote participation? A quorum of the body must be physically present at the meeting location. All persons preset at the meeting location must be clearly audible to each other, and all votes taken be by roll call. What procedures must be followed if remote participation is used at a meeting? The chair must announce the name of any member who is participating remotely and which of the five reasons listed above requires that member's remote participation. And last of that is, members of public bodies who participate remotely may vote and shall not be deemed absent. In addition, members who participate remotely may participate in executive sessions. I think this is the full breadth of where we're going with this, and the opportunity, as elected officials, to continue to do our work, as we've been asked, for voting as well as discussions. Oftentimes, a member needs to be there to add in to the discussion, to add in to a very critical vote. And let me tell you that the Attorney General's Office, I'm sure, didn't do this because for fun and frivolity. They did it because they're looking forward. They see the reality of today. They know about technology, and they know that boards are important. And so, with that, if there's any questions, I surely would like to entertain them.
Do you have anything else to present? I noticed Mr. Belbin is up here, too.
Okay. I think Mr. Belbin would like to say something.
Robert Belbin, 26 Key Street, member of the RDA. Just want for the record here, the Redevelopment Authority did vote 3-0-1. The one abstention was Jack Franny here from this. So, he would be able to vote if anything happens with this, for the record. Personally, I think this is a good opportunity. The only issue I do have is the abuse of it, the possible abuse. This should not be done every week, every two weeks. It should be done on limited circumstances, but once you open it up, it's whatever the chairman decides at that board or committee. So, otherwise, I am for this. Thank you.
Anything else from the RDA? All right, can we get a motion and a second on this to open it for discussion by the board?
I'll make the motion that we adopt this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. It's now open for discussion. Would like to kick it off.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Is, this is coming in through the RDA as one committee. And the law says that it should be all public bodies. Shouldn't this be coming through the website committee instead of, you know, to approve just the RDA? I think it makes more sense to have it come through the website committee and to approve it as a town-wide, unless you, you know, change the way you made the motion. I also have a concern, and to tag on Bob Belbin as the abuse of it, I think we need time to kind of read through these and maybe adopt some additional town policies. For example, to curb the abuse, possibly have a limit of three remote participations per committee member per year. And that's just a rough example. But I think we need time to put this together, because this is gonna be forever. It's a great idea, but I think we should have some procedures and policy in place first.
Well, I'm sorry. Can I answer that? The way the Attorney General has written it up, it controls the Selectmen once you give that opportunity all of the bodies. However, there is an opportunity to opt out for certain committees who maybe you don't want them to have that. That is a privilege that you have also. If we don't move forward and give this a try, we're not staying with today's world. We are elected officials, and oftentimes, we need to be participating. For example, we just had the planning board. We had a disaster, not a disaster, but we had a death. And prior to that, Mr. Fuller, many times for months, was not there. I personally was watching the planning board, and they had to say, well, you know, we have to postpone this. And we looked out, maybe two months now here. Now, I know you can agree with that. Now, that remote participation would have really was a go-forward for that committee if that was that opportunity.
I'm not, I'm fully in agreement with remote participation. It's a wonderful concept. I'm just saying that I think we just need to set some policies and procedures.
The other thing, too, is Bob Belbin had this thing about abuse. You have to understand, we're local officials. If we're abusing a privilege, then we shouldn't be on that committee. Do you agree? So, therefore, I have to strike out the opportunity for abuse. I would say not. As Selectmen, again, you have that opportunity to come back, and you can work with whomever that committee is or is not.
I respectfully disagree that. It's a lot easier, as said, to, you know, change things once everything is in place. So, and there are certain dynamics that happen on the different committees that it's not as easy to change something once it's been put in place. So, to be precautious and do things prudently in the smart way. Policies and procedures are a no-brainer in management. I don't see why it would be wrong to take a couple of weeks just to put some... I don't, I don't see why it would be wrong to take a couple of weeks just to put something in place and roll it out for all the committees. That's all I'm saying. I totally support a remote participation. I think it's a great idea, especially with all the seniors in town and people who are disabled that may want to chime in, so.
Jack. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Are you finished?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
It says here, you'd use it for personal illness, personal disability, emergency, military service, or geographic distance. Do we have to accept all of these? Can we cross our geographic distance?
No, you cannot. The, this is the way the law was written. And you have to accept the law as it is, Jack. You just don't go ahead and.
And that's my concern here, is that, you know, geographic distance, someone has a vacation home someplace, and they opt to go down there a third of the year. You know, that could contribute to the abuse here. I mean, I've seen in many cases where personal illness, disability, emergency, or military service, that would be a great idea to have the remote participation, because I've seen in many cases that, you know, they couldn't really make a decision on a committee because someone got called away to military service. But the geographic distance, you know, once you accept that, you could, someone could live in Florida for virtually the whole year, other than losing their citizenship here in Massachusetts and not be really attending the meetings that often. That's where I'm getting to.
May I answer that, Mr. Chairman?
You just want their excise tax, Jack. We.
Exactly. That, too.
First of all, a person is a person, whether they live here in Massachusetts or they live in Florida, for whatever reason. So geographic distance and all the other four items that they listed were listed in general, and they're listed in general for a reason, so that it can happen. You don't go back and start picking in this or that, or this or that. I'm sorry, sir, but that is not the way the law is written.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I could help a little bit?
True.
And this goes back to some of the comments by Helen, too. I think it would be helpful for us to determine, from a legal standpoint, what ability we have to promulgate local rules and regulations pursuant to this law. I would agree, just at the surface, that you can't change statutory language, but to the extent that there is the ability to, for the board to have some, we don't want to be promulgating rules and regulations that are inappropriate or illegal, on one hand. On the other hand, to the extent that there might be some concerns that can be easily addressed, we would want to do that. I'm not, I know there aren't many communities that are, I know a lot of people are considering this now. I don't know, I have not personally seen any local rules or regs. Doesn't mean they don't exist. I just haven't seen them. So I think getting a little bit of input as to what we can do within the law would be helpful, rather than debating something that we.
You know, if this is a regulation, you know, promulgated by the attorney general and not a law, then maybe we could get some clarification from her office.
That could, it could be. We can, we can look into that.
Dick?
And listen, we're, we're going to make a vote, or we're discussing the possibility for all committees, all boards in our town.
Yes, sir.
Can a committee, and I don't know why this might happen, but can a committee refuse to adopt that policy on their committee? If we voted for it?
Yeah, you have the opportunity to opt out, as it says here. It's very, in addition, it says here, the chief executive, which would be the board of selectmen, can authorize public bodies in that municipality to opt out.
So a committee could opt out?
Of the, yes, of the practice altogether, yes.
Could we, I mean, could we do something simple, like just a teleconference? Does that fall into that?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
A speaker on the table?
That's right. Very simple, yes.
That would meet that requirement, because I know you read the law on the technology.
Yes.
And it could very, it could be simplified.
It is very simple right now. The, the, the open meeting law states it has to be audio. It doesn't talk about video. It just, the audio has to make sure that everybody can hear, and the, and they, and whoever's speaking or whatever can be heard. And that's really where we are today.
Okay. I don't care who brought it to our attention. I think it's a very important issue, and I appreciate you folks bringing it to our attention. I do agree with folks around that we may be, should have a little more import than just you folks, but I'm very positive about it or toward it. That's where I feel.
In order to make things work, somebody has to initiate.
Yes, well, thank you. You did that.
May I? I don't mean to be difficult, because I'm strongly in support of this. However, we recently just had six open meeting violations reported back to us. The open meeting law is probably one of the most complex and possibly, down the road, penalties are going to incur. So this is my biggest concern, is that we do things the right way by sitting back, contacting the AG's office, seeing if we can set our own sideline policies to go in favor with the law, and just to make sure. Now, just like tonight, I'm a little concerned about open meeting law, talking about all the different committees without them being present, because the way the agenda reads, it says redevelopment authority, request for vote to allow remote participation in meetings. The agenda states we are only talking about the redevelopment authority. Is this a potential violation that we're going to make a decision for all committees when they're not all present? So I hope you understand where I'm coming from, that I'm a strong supporter of this, but I really think we just need to take a step back and get some.
Can I ask a quick question?
Some feedback.
Is there a timetable that's pushing this? Or, I mean, if there was some decision, you know, if there was some conclusion to this, say, the end of October, or, that wouldn't, there's no harm done. Is there anybody, is there anything that?
No.
We're missing here in terms of a timeframe?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. In fact, I would favor going with what the webmaster stated, wait till the end of the year. Let's see how our technology within our town, as far as the web goes, and see how far we're being taken. Let's experiment. Let's try one. Just because it says here, when you agree to it, it gives it all municipalities, not everybody's breaking down the door to really try it, and probably they don't want to. But if we don't go forward and begin to understand what we need to do to make this work, when we need to make it work, it's not going to happen. So I would favor.
Yeah, and I, and I think we, there are a lot of situations that you can think of that are problematic. I mean, somebody doesn't show up for a meeting, the chairman doesn't know that someone's not coming, and then you get a phone call on the cell phone at five minutes after the meeting started, and, you know, can you put me up to the microphone? I mean, there has to be.
There's a, the chairman of the board, you have to trust your chairman of the.
I'm just saying that you, I think putting a little bit of shape to this would be very helpful. I mean, we can do it, but.
Sarah, you have something you want to contribute to this?
Well, thank you, yes. I was just going to concur that maybe it's a good idea that we check on just what we can promulgate. I mean, if we're considering policies, we need to know that, that we're not overstepping our bounds.
Right. And if, and if you, and if you can't, if you don't have the potential local authority that you would like, then you may not want to adopt it. That's, that's a, that's a possibility here.
I'll just briefly share with you my discussion with Mr. Sinclair about this issue. And my feelings are that this should be the exception, not the rule. And that's why it's designed, it's what it's designed for, to be the exception, not the rule. And absent any policy or procedures, I think this is too much of a broad brush to approve as-is, and I could not support this like it is. Okay, it's got to be defined and refined before we accept something like this. Having said that, if you would like to withdraw your motion and come back to us at the end of the year, when the website committee has maybe advanced their technology to accommodate this, and we've had a chance to work with the AG, and perhaps do some policies and procedures that we can use as guidelines, then I would be certainly more willing to take another look at it.
Could we table it?
What's that, Dick?
Could we just table it?
Well, I think that's what I'm suggesting.
Yep. We'll make a motion, we table it.
Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
At this point, because we've had this discussion, I agree with policies and procedures. Could I ask the chairman to establish and let us help go forward by establishing within your powers, people on a committee to do just what you said. One, establish policies and procedures, find out what we can and cannot do, so we can go forward. Meanwhile, I'll continue to work with the webmaster to make sure technology is where we need to be, and together.
Absolutely, and I think that somebody from the website committee ought to be on that panel, or that committee.
Right.
That works on establishing the policies and procedures, so.
I would, two things I would point out real quickly. Number one, I think we can do that internally.
Yes.
Working with the boards and committees, I don't think we need a vote from the board, and that's not on tonight's agenda.
No, no.
In that fashion. So going back to Helen's comments, I would want to make sure that even, you know, well-intentioned action doesn't come back to bite us.
Right, yeah.
And again, I don't think we, I think we have a commitment to do some research here. We've got a lot of boards and committees and staff people who can put something together and present it to all the parties for review.
Okay, so.
And we'll certainly work with you to do that, absolutely.
Okay, so if you want to withdraw your motion, and then.
That would be your motion.
That would be my motion to withdraw at this point, so, and then reestablish a committee that we can convene the policies and procedures. Am I saying this correct?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. I think what Mr. Lefan was saying is that we don't actually need a committee to do that, that I believe you're going to check with the AG's office and involve other town departments.
Mm-hmm.
Town council may already have some, some procedures, or other towns may have developed some, once we know what that is. And we can work with your, someone from your committee and.
It would be me.
The people that, that staff other boards and committees, so, as I say, I don't think we need a formal committee set up to.
Especially if you don't want to slow it down.
Right.
Okay, I don't want to slow it down. And I would include, as he recommends, the webmaster as well, going forth with technology. Thank you very much.
You could be the shaker and the mover.
I sure will, and there's no problem there.
So we will be in contact with you about how do we move forward on.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
So you are asking us to table your motion?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a?
The motion's not out of effect.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to table the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for entertaining.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your work, folks.
Thank you.
It's good.
The next item on the agenda is the update on the status of the website committee work currently in progress. And unfortunately, I did not see it beforehand, but I have a letter from the webmaster asking me if we could hold off on this until we have an opportunity to meet with him, and I would certainly be willing to do that. Have to get our schedules together somehow. He's, he's given me some dates.
You think, Rick, that you could try and get ahold of him and see if he could make our next meeting?
Yes, definitely.
Which, which will be another topic for discussion here in a few minutes, so.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
My only concern about doing that, and I, I agree out of respect that none of the website committee could be here, is that my biggest concern about bringing a lot of this to the table was the link and a lot of the privacy issues. So my only request is that.
Already handled.
Okay, that the link will not come back on, and that also, there was language on the website.
Already taken care of.
That will be taken off?
That will be taken care of.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I attended the meeting on Friday, and none of them indicated that they could make the meeting, so.
Okay.
But if we could get them on the, the next meeting, get them to attend.
So I think we can table this discussion right here.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we're at it. It does have to do with the website committee, but it's committees in general. And there was, you know, some of the language out on the website indicated that the website committee was overworked. I am wondering if we could add the website committee to positions that are needed for volunteers, because it's one of the only committees that is not listed on, on our agenda as needing volunteers, and so this may help alleviate some of the overload that they may be feeling.
Maybe Mrs. Lefan can help us with how we establish that, was it?
Yeah. Is it a three-member committee as we established it?
I don't know.
I don't.
We'd have to go back and look. I don't know that there was any limit at all put on this membership. I would be very surprised if there was a limit, that it was only three anyway.
When it first started out, it didn't even have three, did it?
I don't think we did much picking on, it wasn't.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look.
All right, if you can take a look at that, Rick, and we'll put it on for the next meeting.
And if it's not limited to three, we'll just add it to our, our list of vacancies on an ongoing basis, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if it's limited to three, we should probably try to change that.
Yeah, but I don't, I'm, I'm very confident that it's not.
Especially if we're going to have availability problems and stuff.
Exactly, if we're going to advance.
Right.
Do we need to make a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion, we table it.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Are you tabling it to a certain time?
I was going to suggest to the next meeting.
Yeah. Right, I'll contact the committee members and.
That's why I didn't put a date in, I didn't know when they could make it, so I figured Rick could.
Right, we'll, we'll get the best date in the next, I'm sure.
I mean, we could table it till the next meeting, but they might not be able to make that one either, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, unanimous. Next up, the building commission opposition.
Hand out something, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
We think we lost it, Jack.
More fire starter.
I went into the annual town reports when I heard that Mike Mendoza was going to be resigning. It went through from 2004 to 2011. You can see his inspections from, in 2004, were 1,185, and dropped down to 397. This is no reflection whatsoever on Mike Mendoza.
These are permits, not inspections.
Okay, permits. But if you look at the total fees paid, he collected $124,000, almost $125,000 in 2004. 2005, it went to 107, 2006, 112, 2007, 57, 2008, 54, 2009, 50, 2010, 36, and 2011, $28,000. That's a significant drop in the fees to support the operation of his department. You know, in private industry, a lot of people have lost their jobs or had their hours cut back because of situations like this, and I think it's about time we started recognizing this, where these areas have been affected in our own town. Because when you think of it, you know, he brought in $125,000. He was supporting his whole department. But in 2011, he really received a significant general fund subsidy. And I think with the numbers being as difficult as they may be going into the future, after listening to Tom, you know, we need to take a serious look at this.
May I, Mr. Chairman? Few things come to mind. First of all, I think we should be cautious in suggesting that departments should be seeking revenue streams. It's nice, however, if you have inspectional people knocking on doors, looking for, you know, things that may have been done without permits, that can stir up some issues within the community, too. So we have to be careful that we're not challenging these departments to be revenue enhancers, on one hand. On the other hand, the point is made that it's, you know, and I think it's the case whenever you have a position leave, that it's, you want to make sure you review what those responsibilities are today, not 10 years ago or 20 years ago, and see if there's some opportunity there. And I don't have, I'm not very advanced on this right now, but I have spoken to a lot of the people who I would consider stakeholders in the building, you know, health agent, planner, fire department, et cetera, assessor, to discuss having, sitting down on at least one occasion with the position description and seeing what opportunities may exist for either downsizing the job, because there are responsibilities well beyond permitting that the position has. On the other hand, I've also had some discussions with other communities that have, that have utilized a part-time format, which they find helpful for them. And I wouldn't want to go headlong into a recruiting process until we've had an opportunity. recruiting process until we've had an opportunity to explore those types of things too. So I think it makes sense to, you know, take a deep breath, have some internal discussions, and see what model might be helpful. I know, and you know, that we've done that with some other positions in the last couple of years, where we've tried to combine positions and downsize them, and, you know, it's, there's always challenges that come with that, but it doesn't mean you can't make them work.
Yeah, this helps us to explore other opportunities. You know, I'm a strong proponent of regionalization of services, and the state is a big proponent of that, and they have $4 million in grants out there for whatever you might want to use them for. And yeah, you do have to have the opportunity, but this could be a situation where, like in Mike's case, if we started to explore that opportunity maybe a couple of years ago, we might have been able to still retain his services and share him with another community or two, because I think very highly of Mike Mendoza. I think he's extremely well-qualified. I hate to lose him for the town, but with these numbers being the way they were, you know, we really needed to have something like that in place. And I feel very strongly about a lot of the other departments that we have in this community too, that maybe their numbers are down, but I think they're very well-qualified, and we could be the host community if we explored those opportunities.
Dick? Can I ask a question here? I'm not taking focus off this particular item, but the next item, appointing Helen Maroni to review town departments and positions for our possible consolidation. I'm wondering if this isn't a big picture that we need to approach.
Well, my answer is yes and no. Yes in that, if there's going to be some opportunity downstairs in our, I guess we'll call it our land use wing, that may involve some clerical overlap, it may involve some professional service overlap, but we can't wait, you know, this has to be something we explore rather immediately. So like I said, yes and no. My biggest concern with this issue is that I don't want, I want to make sure that we, that, you know, I've been in this business a long time, but every day you realize how much you don't know. I don't want to, I want to make sure we don't overlook some very important issues. For instance, you know, before Mike even left, you know, the fire chief came and spoke to me, and gave me a quick education on how critical that position is to his department. Things that, you know, I may have known subconsciously, but I never really, really considered that much. So there are, this is not a, this is a job that issues permits, but it's not a permitting job, it's a public safety function. I mean, it's under the executive office of public safety with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's, you know, it's under our, you know, the way our budget's organized in Massachusetts is under a public safety function. So we want to be careful with this, we want to be, you know, expedite some review, but we want to be careful that there aren't more issues involved than we just presume right up front. So a little bit of time would be very helpful, but like I said, there are other models out there. There's some sharing of services with communities, there are some part-time models that I'm aware of, and I don't want to preclude anything. I also don't want to rule out the fact that we may all come to the conclusion that, you know, we need a full-time building commissioner. I don't think we should have any preordained conclusion yet, but we look for opportunities when they exist, so.
He had a much expanded job, though, working like for the enforcement office of signed bylaws, or things for the planning board that didn't just revolve around inspections.
Right, it's the building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer, the ADA compliance officer, works with the handicap commission, works with, obviously with your fire department very closely, your assessing department.
You look at everything here, you see all the different functions that he reported on, you know, and number of quarters, you know, appearances, that was a lot too, and he had an expertise in that as well, so.
So we want to make, we just want to be careful, but I think we want to, we don't want to take too much time, though, because there is a function that needs to be provided. As I said, we do have some alternates in place, but that has a lifespan too, obviously, because most of these people are retirees who have certain eligibility's under their own pension obligations for pension requirements, so. But I obviously, if.
I talked to Rick about it, you know, and even though it looks like, you know, we could make some cuts here, or whatever you want to call them, I'd still want to fund the position at its level, because these could come right back in the next five to six years. And the money that we save on it, we could, there's a method to my madness, we can put it in the unfunded OPEB liability, whatever's left at the end of the year. But I wouldn't want to cut the department whatsoever, I want to level fund it.
I mean, I think we could.
Keep it going in the event that it comes back again.
I think we could probably reduce it to, you know, a step one. I mean, keep in mind, Mike was at a step 10, so that's a 20% salary differential over step one.
Starting step.
You know, you also don't have a benefit package to have to fund. So there are some savings, but I agree, I think that we should, we should essentially fund in the position and the budget.
Keep it the same, and then, you know, take whatever's left over and stick it into the OPEB liability account, and that looks pretty good for our balance sheet as small as it might be.
So you're going to get the department heads involved that are with that, and meet and get some kind of, some suggestions together, and then come back?
Yeah, what I would like to do is meet with some of the department heads that I've discussed, and some others, and I also want to talk to some officials from other towns that use, utilize either a shared service or a part-time service. I have, actually have a meeting set up Thursday with one of them, hoping to try to get some information. To me, it's a matter of, you know, you want to change something, but, you know, but you, this is, we want to save money. I don't think anybody suggested that we want to change the service.
No.
Or change the outcomes. We just want to try to find a way to save money or maybe increase our flexibility. So keeping that in mind, I want to make sure we know down well all of the services that we're actually trying to replace. I had someone from the handicap commission call me last week, who was wondering, you know, what are we going to do without Mike? Well, I don't know. We'll figure it out. I mean, we'll figure it out, but. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of stakeholders.
Keeping that in mind, as you heard the gentleman from the financial services there, we're stuck in neutral right now, and this thing can go either way. And if we don't make some appropriate moves, we're going to find ourselves in an even more difficult situation. We have the opportunity to move forward here, tighten our belt, and perhaps downsize this position to a part-time position, in which case, we can bring in a part-timer, and we can look either to share services with another town. If the economy improves to the point where there's an overwhelming amount of work that needs to be done, and alls we got to do is refer to these stats here to show that we're not doing much of anything right now, then we can always bring it back to the table and reinstate it to a full-time position. So that's my thought on the matter. We need to start moving forward, we got to stop committing everything to death, and we need to make, take some decisive action. So what's the pleasure of the board here? Somebody give me something going.
Can I make one more, one more comment?
Go ahead.
In, I followed Mike's progress through the city of Marlborough, and he was on the agenda, and then in the minutes, it said the appointment of Mr. Michael Mendoza as building commissioner effective on the date of confirmation, where he said to the council, for a term of three years. And we used to, at one point, reappoint all appointed town officials every three years. Could we potentially put that as an agenda item for our next meeting? About the reappointment of appointed officials for three-year terms? Because that was disbanded, I don't know how many years ago, but I'd like to bring it back and put it back up there. But I think we really need to discuss it at a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, back to the original topic. Would somebody like to make a motion towards something?
I was thinking of, I know I tend to agree, I'm just wondering if part of your pursuit, Rick, would be to talk with some of the, like Plimpton or Halifax, and where is their building inspector, and what's the possibility of a part-time sharing? Is that what you were thinking of, part of your research?
That would be part of it. I know, for instance, there's a town local here that has, they have a part-time, they have a number of part-time people. They don't employ anybody full-time, but they need three part-time people to handle the volume and the whole, you know, the complexity of the job, because it has a lot of different, it's multifaceted, so.
What town is this?
Pembroke is the one I'm referring to right now. So what the division of duties are, you know, how it's organized, obviously, somebody has to be in charge of this. You can't just have three part-timers running around, so there's got to be lines of authority there, so. You know, in part-time, you know, usually when you make, you go to a part-time, it's, you know, you want to keep it under the benefit threshold of, you know, 19 hours is where you try to keep it. You know, whether or not this is a position that could be done in 19 hours, or you need multiple part-times, I just, I think that, I think we have to be cautious that we don't sell the position so short that we simply can't get the job done in the hours that are available. That would be my concern.
And that's why, that's why I thought sharing it with another community.
Yeah.
Can you come up with.
Fire or something, you could call that person from the other town.
Can you come up with a couple of multiple-choice answers for us for next meeting ideas?
I could do that, I could do that.
I think for the purposes of what we've been talking about, I'll make a motion to, at this point, make this builder, building commissioner position part-time, and we can work towards that for the future, or, but I think we need to make a decision, because we don't want to leave this town empty-handed. How long, I mean, how many people are taking on his responsibilities right now, Rick, in terms of, I know what it's like when people are filling in for someone?
There are two alternate inspectors, and in addition, we have somebody who, an inspector who is just into review permit applications and issue permits.
How do we compensate them, Rick?
They are compensated on an hourly basis. I think between 25, I think around $25 an hour is what they've been compensated on historically. And again, we haven't had to use them in anything more than a, you know, a more of a quasi-emergency fill-in.
Right.
You know, that's how we've had to use them, so.
How does that relate to the salary that we were paying Mike?
Well, considering that right now, we're only probably paying about 15 hours a week of service, because we're just doing inspections. We're not doing any of the.
Right, the other.
Interactions with your fire service. We're not doing, you know, some of the zoning enforcement. You're not doing any of those other things that take a lot of time, so you're only doing a small part of the job.
That's why I think it's important that if we move forward with this, that we advertise the position as a part-time position with these augmentees, and perhaps utilize the part-timer in those other capacities, and just fill in where needed with the augmentees, and still provide a significant savings to the town. So.
Yeah, I think the question is how many part-timers might we need to pull this off?
The one part-timer and the augmentees? The three retirees that you have out there that can jump into the void?
Well, Mike, again, keep in mind, these are people who are not, not doing work every week all the time. These are people who have historically jumped in on a quasi-emergency basis, and so it's a little different to say, well, from now on, you know, you're, we're going to need your services for, let's say, six hours a week indefinitely, so. I'm just saying, I think a little more, a little more research for us would probably, I would be able to give you better answers.
Keep them on an as emergency basis, you know what I mean? But you, and you can build that pool, just like they do with special police officers, so that you have enough people on standby, that if there are any significant emergencies, that you can cover all the bases on this. Tom?
Thank you. I, I'm, I'd rather err on the side of caution and not jump to making it a part-time position immediately. I think that, as Rick has pointed out, there's, there are more things than just issuing permits to this position. And zoning enforcement officer, Americans with Disabilities Act officer, who work with the fire department, and it's not that those needs have gone away, they're still there. So I guess I'm, what I heard you say is that you wanted to talk to some of the department heads, the fire department, get a sense of, really, does it need to stay full-time, or can it be part-time? And then, if it can be part-time, who's going to do those other jobs? I'm just not really clear, in deference to Helen, I understand her motion, but I'm not real clear that I'm ready to make that, because I'm not sure what we're basing that on.
Mr. Chairman?
We have, Jack?
Just look at the numbers, the drop-off. 2004, inspections for the year, 1,185. 2011, 397.
But Mr. Franny, I guess my point is, that may well be true, but that sounds like that's only about a third or a fourth of the job. If these guys downstairs are doing 15 hours a week, and that's all they're doing, I'm talking about the, you know, the other three half or three-quarters of the job.
A part-timer would be doing half the job.
Why didn't he reflect it in the town report, you know?
These are not, these are not inspections, these are permits. A permit may take a dozen inspections.
Just look at the numbers alone. 125,000, you're only bringing in 28,000.
I, Jack, you're still missing a point.
But the only thing I'm saying is that this is not, this is not inspections, these are permits. Each permit may take many, many inspections, so. I'm just saying, I don't, I don't want anyone to look at this and say, well, these are the number of inspections. I don't, I don't know, these.
You talk about inspection, new dwellings, 2004, 38. 2011, too.
But Mr. Franny, again, those are permits. He may have had to, maybe King Richard's Fair gets one permit, but he may go to King Richard's Fair 100 times, for all we know. I have no clue.
Pembroke, which is a much larger community than ours, seems to be able to make it work, so.
Well, they make it work with three part-timers, and this is the problem. I can't tell you right now what that model looks like. Three part-timers all working 19 hours, or three part-timers working five hours, because three part-timers working, working less than 20 hours is a lot more time than we put in right now. So they save a benefit, they save, they save in other areas, though. They save in, you know, you know, health insurance costs, et cetera, by not having a full-time person with benefits. But I, I'm not telling you that it's 19 hours, it's three people working part-time, and I can't give you better information than that right now, Mr. Chairman. I would, I would like to have the chance to do that, though, that's all, before you would make a final decision on this.
And Rick, you and I both know that the law allows you to cover your expenses, so if his numbers have dropped off so much, why wasn't he back in front of us saying, you know, the permit fee for King Richard's Fair, if it was 100 times, should be a couple thousand dollars, you know?
Is that good for business?
I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, that's.
And I just threw out that number, I have no idea how many inspections he was.
Well, I'm just trying to make a point, that, you know, private industry and business worldwide is run into these things here, and they've had to.
This is not a.
Make the hard choices.
This is a public safety job, though. This is not a, if you generate it, then you can keep working, because then you have inspectional officials looking for empty boxes on curbs. We get the calls on that stuff historically. You have people who are trying to generate business to keep the office going, as opposed to responding to requests for permits the traditional way. There's a, there's a potential problem that you might be setting up if you're trying to make an office, you know, somebody's job contingent upon his or her ability to bring in cash. You know, not everything in government is designed to be a revenue center.
I cited the cash there, but you look at all the other statistics, you know, maybe he's not properly, didn't properly reflect really what he does in the town report for us to make a decision on that. But if you look at all the other numbers, they're all down.
I don't think the town report was designed to make those kind of decisions. It was only, it's only reporting his permitting activity. I don't, you know, so, listen, you know, I'm a little bit surprised, Jack, because it's my understanding that, that we were going to be moving forward with some look at this.
Yes.
From a study standpoint, I thought that's what we, you and I had talked about. So I'm a little bit surprised that you've apparently already made a conclusion on this.
Well, I haven't made it, I'm looking at these numbers here and saying, you know.
But you've looked at these numbers for two weeks now, so these numbers haven't changed. My only concern is that this is only one facet of a job, and allowing a little bit of time for us to do a little bit more in-depth look at this is all I'm seeking.
And all I'm asking you to do is to do a realistic look at it.
All right, gentlemen, that's enough. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All right. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to know, can, when you do the research into this with Pembroke and the others, that we look at a minimal amount of service that's required, so that we can minimize the expense and/or, and plugging in what our other department heads feel is necessary services to fulfill our responsibilities with this position. I'd like. I'd, I'd like more information on that, um, before I make a commitment.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna clarify, this motion is to make the position of building commissioner part-time?
That's correct. Dick, anything else? Sarah? Jack?
Just explore the opportunity to share it with another community, 'cause I think that's the best option for us. You know, I know it's public safety, but it's public safety, I know that when you did the, uh, when you had that study from Morse Associates, they had looked at all the different communities, and at the time, the building inspector position in Abington, which was one of the communities you looked at, was part-time. So I don't know how they, maybe you can talk to them, see how they, in their larger community than we are.
Anybody else have anything, no, to add to the discussion? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of making the building commissioner's position part-time, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Three to two, the vote passes.
May, may I ask another question, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Not to be obstinate, but, um, part-time can take a whole lot of different forms. What, when you, what does part-time mean, you know, less than twenty hours, less than thirty hours?
What do we hire a part-time with other positions? Less than benefit rate, right?
Well, that, that's what I wanna make sure that I, I want the guidance, I mean, I don't wanna be advertising the wrong thing.
No, I think we wanna look for something that's gonna maximize the savings for the community, but still give us the required expertise that we need. And in light of what's going on right now, we, we can always revisit this down the road, if building picks up, and that position needs to be made whole again. As Mr. Franny suggested, uh, perhaps we might wanna hold on to the funding for the position, so.
I'd wanna still level fund it, but by the same token, I still wanna emphasize, you can still go along the lines of doing something with another community or communities, so we can have that availability.
Right.
I will say this, that you obviously know my feelings on the subject, I'm not gonna rehash them. And obviously, I'm gonna follow the guidance of the Board of Selectmen, that's my job. But I do have some reservations as to whether or not we can, we can do what needs to be done at this level, but.
Then, then I think you need to bring that ju-
Do our best, we will do our best.
You need to bring that justification back before us.
Wouldn't be the first time I failed at something. I suspect it won't be the last. All right, next up is the appointment of Helen Morone to review town departments and positions for possible consolidation. And this is something that Ms. Morone, uh, brought up at our last meeting, and volunteered to-
Well, especially-
Lead the charge on this.
Yeah, well, especially in light of the discussion we're having, we need to look at this as a big picture, so, I would be more than willing to work with you. Especially in light of, um, the building commissioner position going part-time, we can work together on it. So, I would have not a problem doing that.
There's been some suggestions that there might be other savings and to be found on there, like Rick mentioned earlier, combining, uh, the secretarial roles and so on and so forth. You know, maybe you beef up one position, and you survive with the part-time position, I don't know.
Or, or some clerical maneuvering may-
Right.
Without any cuts there, may help-
Right.
May help the part-time situation-
Exactly.
Work better, who knows, we'll, we'll see.
I'm just suggesting, Helen, that you maybe look, number one, you find maybe a couple other people to help you work through that. That's a pretty momentous task, actually.
Right.
Well, we will certainly help her, Mr. Ward, don't-
Yeah, no, well, I didn't know, but somebody else in another department, or something.
Well, I can work through, uh, Rick on that.
Tap into all the resources that we have in the municipality, for, to gather her information and make her decisions, because-
I, I will utilize Rick, that's why we were just chatting, saying that Rick and I will work together, so we can coordinate.
This is a pretty significant responsibility, it impacts people's lives and everything else, and we don't wanna, um, you know, take that lightly, so.
And you'll, you'll report back to us with your findings, because my concern here is that, if there's opportunities for further cuts, that we should go to the regional approach, and, you know, I, I'd rather be the host community, 'cause we lost a very valuable asset, Mike Mendoza. If we had done this a couple of years ago, and started moving to that, you know, we'd still have Mike, and we'd be sharing him with another community. Feel the same way towards the people that work for our town.
Well, you may be able to trade that back and forth, Jack, if you have multiple roles that are being utilized in several communities, you may be able to have one community pick it up for one position, another community pick it up for, you know what I'm saying? We don't necessarily have to take the financial burden on for every role that we wind up regionalizing and consolidating.
You'd share them, there's, that's what they have, that conference, regionalization conference for, they have different intermunicipal agreements in place that you could put.
All right, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, did we have a, uh-
One, one-
Motion and a second?
Oh, um, well, Mr. Chair, if I may, if we're gonna vote on this, I, it occurs to me that, um, we might want to invoke the rule of necessity, because I know the three of us, um, work in other, in town departments, and since this is a review of town departments and positions, I, I felt I should probably recuse myself, I don't know how you guys feel, but, you know, other, then we don't have a quorum, so we might wanna invoke the rule of necessity.
I think, as a practical matter, I think your suggestion is very good, invoke the rule of necessity. It's not gonna be us that are doing the evaluation, it'll be somebody else that's not a town employee, so, I, I think we're a step removed from it, but, as a practical matter, I agree with you, maybe we oughta do that.
I think that's right, too.
Can you record that? We're gonna invoke the rule of necessity?
No, so, so, my point was that I was prepared to recuse myself, but then it occurred to me that there are two other members of the board who also work in other town departments, and in that case, there wouldn't be a quorum of the board to even be able to vote to appoint Helen. So, uh, that being said, that's the kind of situation, I believe, where you would invoke the rule of necessity, that therefore allowing all three of us to vote.
Should be done as a motion, you know.
Well, I'd like to invoke the rule of necessity, though.
Can I second it?
All right, we have a motion and a second to invoke the rule of necessity, and that, that works for me. Do we have any further discussion on that? Dick, did you wanna say something?
Nope, I was gonna say you don't need to bother, 'cause I was gonna vote in favor of Helen's motion.
So, so it'd be two, zero, zero, huh? I, I think as a practical matter, we'll vote on that, we have a motion and a second, and no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, it's unanimous. Now we'll go back to the other.
The original motion.
We had the original motion, and, and who made that motion?
Helen.
No, I didn't make the motion to appoint myself.
Make a motion to appoint.
Jack made a motion that we appointed, do we have a second?
I'm not giving myself homework unless asked.
So we have a motion and a second on the initial item, do we have any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, it's unanimous, okay. Fishing tournament request for Sampson's Pond, the Cran Bog Hogs, for ten twenty-eight twelve, from six AM to two PM. And this is a pretty standard thing every year, isn't it?
Make a motion, we grant this permit.
Motion and a second has been made, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Next up is the discussion regarding the status of the Class Two licenses of HJ Beale, the property's been sold, and the Class Two and commercial garage license of rotary collision, who, by the way, has paid the back taxes, but has not paid the license fee to date.
Right, they need to pick up their license, technically, they're operating without a license, and the reason this comes up now is, you know, we go through, uh, we, certain amount of notices, but the renewal's coming up in January, and technically, they don't have a license to be renewed, so. The question is, um, you know, I, I don't know, you're the licensing authority. The issue with Beale is rather simple, in that we just simply don't put it on for a renewal. I don't believe you feel, you would feel the need to revoke the license, but that's up to you. The rotary collision's a little more, uh, difficult, because it is an operating business currently, so.
Has anybody talked to him, our correspondent?
I know that Jean has done that in, in the past, I don't know the last time she's done that, but, uh, they are aware that they have not picked up their license, now, I'm not aware of what their tax status is at this moment, but, Elaine has it, so.
I would think the fee for their license would be substantially lower than their back taxes, no?
I would also, yes.
So if they paid the back taxes, I mean.
Well, they had, well, they sold the property, they had to pay the back taxes.
Oh. Mr. Chair, can we have a, ask a question, just for public clarification? I'm not, it's not clear, are we, is the question, should we renew, um, Beale's license? Because the Beale family, as I understand it, has actually moved from the premises, is there someone asking us to renew that license?
The only, we're bringing this to your attention, that you have a premises, that you have license, that is not utilizing your license. It has not been turned back into the town. Therefore, your option is to revoke that license, which requires a public hearing, et cetera. Or you could just simply let the nature run its course, and let it, and not renew it.
December thirty-first, it expires, yeah.
Which makes the most sense in that case.
Can someone else operate under that license?
Yeah.
No.
Doesn't go with the property.
So somebody moves in, they can't use that license.
Last two licenses are not transferable.
Is, or let it just die?
It's, it's kind of a moot point, I think we oughta just let it expire, that would be my suggestion.
Rotary collision's a little different, obviously, none of us wanna, it just puts you as a licensing board in a little bit of a, a pickle, because, obviously, um, you know, you want all of your licensees picking up their licenses in a timely manner, and, you know, et cetera.
We want them paying for it, too.
And we want them paying for it, too.
Your recommendations, sir?
Well, I would be, I, I wasn't aware that they just recently made some effort to pay some back taxes, this is feeling new information. So, I would be more than happy to give them one more personal phone call, um, in light of this information, and see if we can't get that taken care of, if we can, then you won't see this again. But if we can't within a reasonable timeframe, and again, we're already into, going into October on a-
Right.
An annual license, so, um, then you, then I would think you're gonna have to make a decision as to whether or not you're gonna take some action on the license. Because technically, they're operating without a license right now.
I'm sorry, are we now talking about rotary collision?
Correct.
Correct.
I know, it is confusing, isn't it, yeah?
Right.
Just segue one into the other. The, uh, well, I think, you know, without being heavy-handed, just remind them that we only have certain options. And if they don't pay the fees, we are obligated to revoke their license, and it's unlikely they're gonna get a renewal, you know?
Well, they've operated most of the year without the license.
Right, technically, they're without, right, but the, the, the dynamics are the same, though, so we will, we will call them this week and see if we can't-
Okay, is this the only one, is this just-
The only one.
Slipped through the cracks, and that's it, okay. All right, um, we need to make a motion on that, or you think that this sounds bad?
I will report back to you.
Okay. Maybe just put it on the next agenda, and we can get the update on it, thank you. All right, the next up is the Salvation Army collection boxes, and is there somebody that would like to speak to this?
I know, um, apparently, nobody came for this, um, th- this is a, obviously, a request from Salvation Army. This was a request initially that went to the library, um, they, library trustees rejected this, primarily because they didn't feel they could give up one of their parking spaces at the library, because there's times when they're overflowing, so. We do have room back where our dumpsters are, my, my concern historically is that, um, several years ago, we had another, um, a goodwill-type dumpster that apparently members of the community thought was for their own goodwill. And it became quite a problem for buildings and grounds, uh, so, so, you know, we have the opportunity, because of the space we have back there, um, to, to have a bin. The question becomes whether or not it's a practice you wanna, I mean, we're certainly happy to give it another chance, another shot, to see if something like that can work.
What do they wanna collect, Rick?
Uh, clothes.
Clothes, okay, 'cause we do have one that the Lions have over at, uh, Cava Square.
Right.
And then we've got a, something over at the United Parish, if I'm not mistaken.
Books.
Books and stuff, and, yeah.
So, and I don't know if they've had any problems, again, it's been a number of years since we had this type of collection point on the grounds of Town Hall, um, and there, again, it be, it became a dumping ground, um, for, for people, and then, we had to ask them to take it out, unfortunately, so, but, you know.
Should we let them do it on a trial basis?
I mean, it's, it's a good cause, and, you know, it would be nice.
It says here, if necessary, a certificate of liability insurance-
We would always-
Be produced, and any issues are easily resolved with a call to our dispatch office, there's a letter on the back there.
I think a trial basis would be appropriate.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, they're a great organization.
Always revoking it.
Helped a lot of people.
Well, that's why, you know, you hate to ignore the request, I can understand why the library doesn't feel it's the right place, but.
You hate to reject it.
The trial basis wouldn't be a reflection on the organization, it's a reflection on the past problems.
Right, right.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm not gonna be the Grinch.
I make a motion that we go forward with this request.
Six months, Dick?
Uh, you wanna put a, yeah, sure.
Try it out, see how it goes.
Revisit it in six months?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed, it's unanimous. Fire department request for pre-approval for the two thousand and thirteen safe grant, and, once again, these guys are doing a great job finding free money, with no match from the town required. I think it's super. I can find it here.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand and thirteen safe grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and, uh, it's for the purchase of fire prevention supplies, equipment, and assists with payroll for firefighters conducting the fire prevention program. Uh, the fire department will use the above funds to purchase fire prevention supplies, audiovisual devices, and help pay firefighters' expenses during our fire prevention programs. I think it's a great, great idea, a great cause, and we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I just wanna say that I'm gonna recuse myself, 'cause I have to sign this town treasurer, I'm very much in favor of it.
All right.
As you said, they've done an outstanding job, an outstanding job on grants.
So hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, it's unanimous.
Obstein.
Four, zero, one. Okay, executive session minutes policy, and this is something that was brought up by Ms. Heelens, our colleague here on the board, at our last meeting, I've had a chance to read it, and I hope that everybody else has that, uh, sitting on the board with me. I think it's an excellent document, and in light of the things that have transpired, and the learning process we've gone through with the open meeting law, and some of the other things, uh, that it's long overdue.
So would we re, be, would we, how would we review these in another executive session?
Yes, you are allowed to review executive session minutes in executive session.
And then approve them.
Right, and then you have to take a, a vote.
And then you keep them in executive session, that's all.
And then you would keep them private until a subsequent vote to release them, and, so.
If I may-
Go ahead.
Chair, I think, yeah, the, the idea was that, um, we'll just, it's hard to know where to start, but say, we, say we had an executive session tonight. The town administrator's office would make every effort to produce some sort of draft for us at our next regular meeting, for us to take home and look at, and then, the next time we had an executive session, we would vote in ex, we would look at them and decide, well, okay, this case is still ongoing, we can't release those, this one's all finished, we can release that one.
Right.
So we would vote to release it, and then we'd come back into our next selectmen's meeting, and vote whether, you know, to approve those minutes. So, so we've done it in executive session and in open meeting.
And at least we have a process.
Yes.
Something is in motion.
I think it's a great idea, 'cause look at how many outstanding-
Right.
Executive sessions we have, I don't think we have any minutes from it, how do you remember back?
Mr. Chair?
What went on, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you done, Rick?
Yeah, I'm done.
He's done, yes, ma'am.
Um, I just have a couple-
You called me Rick.
It's getting late, um, just a couple questions, um, one question and one request for the next meeting. I know in a timely fashion is written in the law. Can we make an internal policy to give a timeline on, in a timely fashion? You know, speaking with Mike at the AG's office, he said it, it's just varied, and, uh, the way, he won't really come out and say, yes, you can, yes, you can, but, um, he was alluding to me that we could.
We should, because there's no guidance from them on what-
Exactly.
Is reasonable, so, I think-
How, how can you do that when issues may not be resolved, you know what I'm saying?
Well, you can say ongoing.
Right, well, you can approve the minutes-
Yeah.
And, but not release them.
Correct.
Okay.
So that the ongoing, so, in fact, there's one, one quick, um, amendment I would like to suggest to the board, and that would be in the release of minutes, in the sentence that starts prior to this session.
Uh, which paragraph are you on? I see, first paragraph under release of minutes.
Under release of minutes.
Third sentence.
Prior to this session, town council will be- Prior to this session, Town Council will be provided with and will review. I would just like to say, prior to this session, the chairman, I would like to have the chairman of the board determine whether or not Town Council is necessary to review.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I mean, you, as, just as a matter of policy, I wouldn't wanna be violating a policy on something that's rather obvious.
Right.
That's all.
Nor do we need to spend money unnecessarily, too.
There might be things you need to, but that would be my only suggestion.
So then, while we're making that amendment, could we tie in the "in a timely fashion", which we consider such and such time? Two weeks?
Um, so, in the release of minutes, okay, oh, so you're not, because it does say, "on a quarterly basis, we will review the minutes in executive session, and shall determine whether the purpose of each executive session topic addressed therein still exists." So, are you suggesting, instead of
Quarterly one is good.
Four, four times a year?
Quarterly's good, yeah.
I mean, I think that that might, cause a lot of these issues, you know, go on.
Right, 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 right.
That is a kind of a time constraint in itself.
Right, it is, I agree.
And some can never be released.
Correct.
Wouldn't you have minutes for each session? That's what I was thinking of.
There are always minutes, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
What's up there?
So you might be reviewing two or three.
Question those.
Two or three minutes, uh, from three, two or three meetings. Or we may go quarter without any executive session minutes at all, which would be nice.
So, uh, we have an executive session. Town administrator makes a reasonable attempt at getting the, the notes together for our next regular meeting.
So we can.
We get to review them.
Privately, at home.
Privately, okay. And, and then we, at our next executive session, we act on them?
We, we decide whether or not they are
Releaseable.
Releaseable. Because if a case is still ongoing, we still can't release the minutes.
First, you have to accept the minutes.
Okay, but you, you need to accept the minutes.
Accept the minutes.
Okay, so, uh, then, uh, any further action on the, the minutes would depend on another executive session, somewhere down the road, right?
Possibly, it could very well be.
So that's why you're talking about quarterly?
Right.
If no executive session took place from that point on, at a quarterly point, we have to
You might have to.
act on executive session minutes.
Right, you might have to hold an executive session just to review minutes.
Okay.
But that would be okay.
Um, um, okay, now.
Quarterly sounds like a lengthy timeframe, but when you're meeting every two weeks, and sometimes you cancel like meetings, it's really not that long a period of time, so.
And with regard to the release of those minutes, if the chairman reviews those on a, in a, in a matter, if we provide them and they're reviewed, you don't need to have an executive session to release minutes, um, you can, you can release them in an open session, obviously, that would.
Yeah, only, only if you've completed all the work for the
Exactly.
You can't release them
Correct.
in the middle of whatever you do.
I would put chairman, vice chairman on that, Rick, just in
Or chairman or vice chairman.
Availability purposes and whoever it is down the road, or whatever.
Now, Rick, when you, you're gonna give, you're gonna give us those minutes in hard copy, right? You're not gonna email them to us?
No, I would, it would all be hard copy.
Yeah, cause you shouldn't email them.
Carefully coded to each individual's blood type to make sure it's, so, inappropriate.
DNA. Sarah, is that acceptable to you, the changes on the?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
On this discussion, um, my request was, could we put on the next agenda to discuss all the committee agendas, uh, um, not agendas, uh, minutes? Because I really think that we need to zone in on the timing of when minutes are done throughout all the committees, because.
We had a policy that we developed
Town policy, right, town-wide policy?
Well, if the general
If I could have been before you do, Rick, I, I remember very distinctly, uh, Town Council coming to us and, and discussing that, and I, I was convinced there was a timeframe for, for producing minutes, and, uh, what we were told was that there actually is no timeframe, outlined in, in the law, what it says, again, as you said, Helen, is timely fashion. What, what committees and boards and commissions do have to do, if I understand it correctly, is, is produce the minutes. They don't have to, you know, approve them, or turn them in, or anything like that, they could be hand-scribbled.
Hand, handouts, yeah.
And if someone asks for them, then you have ten days to respond, saying, well, you know, we have them, it's gonna cost this much, it'll take that amount of time. So, that's another question, I mean, can, because the law
Can we mandate that?
That's my, that's my question, if the law is not clear on that.
And, and you don't have authority over a lot of boards and committees in town, too?
Just the ones we appoint, or you appoint, or whatever.
True.
What if we set up a town-wide guideline, policy slash guideline? The policy would apply to the boards that we do have an impact on, and the guidelines would certainly be appropriate for the other boards, I don't know, I mean, if that's what you're looking for, Helen, I'm not sure.
And we can look at that, yeah.
Definitely.
Put it off a discussion, and we can
Sure.
We could put it off a discussion and, and invite the other boards, especially the ones that we don't have jurisdiction over.
Maybe some other town has a
To get some feedback.
Has a, uh, maybe we can pull, rip something off somebody else too quickly that might be of service to us as a, just as a basis for discussion.
Are you gonna incorporate these changes and give them to us afterwards into this policy?
We shall do that.
Okay.
Just make things more, um, you know, seamless, and there's a lot of, you know, I know that we've spent a lot of time, you know, you know, obtaining minutes for residents, and sometimes there's a lot of anger out there, because, you know, minutes aren't distributed when they should be, so.
Right, and I know, obviously, there's, you know, a board like us, and the planning board, uh, Board of Health, those boards that have staff, you know, it's easy, but, you know, you have like, you know, the handicap commission, you know, you have a lot of boards and committees that, that are, that don't have any staff, and they, they toil in relative obscurity. Um, and, you know, they're all volunteers, too, so, you know, just as, I know we're all mindful of that, but, uh, it's easy for us, but it's not as easy for some of these other, you know, groups.
We have a motion and a second, did that include the amendments to the policy, or do we have to separately, uh,
Yeah.
vote those?
Yes, I thought it did.
Okay.
Cause we got the "in timely fashion," we're gonna keep it at quarterly.
Okay.
And Rick's gonna give us a copy of what we, what we designate?
Right, so the only change was to include the language regarding, uh, the, the chairman or vice chairman determining whether or not Town Council is necessary to review.
That's the only change.
So, Elaine, do you have all that stuff?
She's got it.
Hope I, I hope I called you by the right name.
Correct, that's, that's not a change, because it's in, it's in the policy.
It's in there, yep.
I was calling her Diane earlier.
Well, I went and saw Diane today, and she had Elaine's nameplate on the front of it, and I was calling her Elaine.
She's just playing with you.
I have twins, and I always mix them up, too.
So we have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, unanimous.
Elaine is questioning who made the motion in the second, for the record here. And I don't remember either.
It was so long ago.
Neither do I.
Does anybody know?
This is bad.
Did I?
I think Jack made the motion.
I, I don't even remember making the motion.
I seconded it, didn't I?
Yes, you did, that.
Okay.
Jack made the motion, Dick seconded it.
Very good, okay, and it was unanimous, excellent.
Wow.
Thank you.
That's a majority.
It doesn't, it doesn't get any better, either.
Okay. Next up is discussion for the October meeting schedule, and I know that there is a couple of conflicts on October ninth, and through my informal discussions with some of the members of the board, uh, the sixteenth seemed to be a suitable replacement date. Rick, you have a conference, and I know Jack has something else, so. I am perfectly amenable if, uh, folks wanna do that, move it to the sixteenth.
Sixteenth and twenty-third.
Sarah, is that good with you?
Yeah.
And I have already talked.
Well, Dick, is that good with you?
I have talked to the, uh, Mr. Hunter, so he's aware of that for planning board scheduling purposes, too.
And we will also have one on the twenty-third?
Yep, sixteen and twenty-third, yes.
Rick, you'll be at a conference at, what is it?
Over the ninth, yeah, so.
So can I have a motion to change the October ninth meeting to October sixteenth?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Citizens' participation, now, they're all asleep out there, so I don't think we're gonna get Oh, Bob, two minutes, you're down from three.
He's been good.
You're gonna read that whole thing?
He broke the chair, now you're down to one minute.
He's done.
That was beautiful.
We'll send you the bill, you don't have to bother.
All right, I wanna apologize for last week, all right, last time you guys were here. All right, I went on, I have two comments, that's it. Number one is on the executive session, I actually wrote here for all departments, cause I know with the RDA, I wanna see policies in there, so we have clear-cut things to do. That's one of my things. Uh, the second thing was, is with the building commissioners, was, uh, I had looked through many files in there, and, um, there were documents missing out of the building files and whatnot, and possibly an audit of the files, uh, just to know what's in there, what's not in there, because, um, really, I know there's a six and ten-year statute of limitations on issues, but, um, people should know what's missing out of their files.
Well, I think you're asking for us to conduct an exorbitant, time-consuming, costly task. You know, if people have questions, they certainly have a right to come to the building inspector's office and talk to the secretary down there, have, have their files pulled and, and go through them, but I don't, I don't think that we need, as a matter of course, to conduct an audit. How do we know what's missing?
And, and if I may, you said you looked through the building commissioner's files?
Building permit files, everyone has one in their house. I went through probably, I'd have to say, close to a hundred different houses whilst researching my case, and looking at their building files there, uh, sat right there and did that. And I found occupancy permits missing, plumbing permits aren't even in the files, and stuff like that, so.
The other thing, too, is you could be talking about stuff that's been missing since long before our last building inspector.
Oh, I wanna make it clear, Mike did an excellent job with his building files. Everything was very particular with his files.
Okay.
Um, I, I do have to say that, i- if it was out of place, he knew someone was in that file, um, because there are tons of people getting into those files, um, should not getting into it, but looking into the files, cause they're public record, anybody can, usually when you go for a mortgage or whatnot, someone's gonna go in there, take a look at that, all right? So, um.
Would you like to conduct the audit?
After, uh, after, uh, October.
After October. I, I just think you, you're talking about something that's, uh, gonna be a fantastic.
What did you say the statute of limitations was, ten years and six years?
There's a six-year statute of limitation and a ten-year statute of limitations.
And so how long was Mike here for? Was he here ten years or more?
I believe it was about ten years.
He was here for twelve years.
Twelve years.
Thank you, Sarah, sorry.
Are, are plumbing permits in the same folder, in the electrical, they're all, that's a separate file?
The plumbing inspector keeps his own sets of files that are not with the building files. So if you want to get a copy of a plumbing, you would have to go there and submit a request, and he'd have to pull it, give it a copy, and then, cause he has his files in the building. Personally, I'd like to see everything together, that way you could look at it, but I think he does that as a, um, I don't wanna talk for him, but, uh, i- it's more of a, a control manner of making sure.
And it's up to whoever's sitting in the chair, however, how they wanna.
Exactly, and that's, that's his prerogative to do it that way, I don't wanna question his reasons or anything for it.
So politely, I'm suggesting that maybe you're asking for something that's
That's fine.
extremely difficult.
Just letting you guys know. Thank you very, have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you for being here, Bob, we always enjoy your attending our meetings. All right, is that it on the citizens' participation? Okay, Russ, you're good?
I'm good.
Aw, come on.
Okay, Dawn? Crowd beating down the door tonight, huh?
Yeah.
To get out.
Yeah.
All right, we have the town administrator notes.
Mr. Chairman, just two quick things, uh, first, I'd like to just draw your attention to something I'd emailed out regarding MCAS scores, and I'd just like to congratulate the school department on the, uh, the article and their progress with MCAS this year, as you know, they were cited as, uh, as being one of the bright spots in the region statewide for improvements in MCAS scores, so I wouldn't want it to go overlooked, so I wanna, again, wanna congratulate them, and, uh, and just to point out that, uh, during the month of October, we will be starting to coordinate our beginnings of our budget process, which is like putting needles in our eyes every year, but it's, uh, just wanna remind you that the fund's about to begin yet again.
Are you gonna devise a schedule for timelines?
For hearings, et cetera, yes, yes, yeah, for submission, and, you know, and some, it wouldn't be an, an exact schedule, but some, some basic parameters, uh, on, uh, on meeting dates, and obviously, we'll have to talk to Mr. Carter about what works. I know, historically, I think, you know, we've had, uh, joint meetings, uh, that I think people have felt were time-effective, uh, and I know both the Selectmen and Finance Committee have followed up with further discussions with departments as they deem necessary, but, um, you know, that's up to the Finance Committee as to whether or not they wanna continue to participate in that, so we'll find that out from, from that committee.
Typically, don't you charge the department heads in November, Rick, with, uh?
Yeah, we put together our budget guidelines, uh, in October, and usually get, get them out, uh, by the end of October, and, um, uh, we try to get the budgets, uh, submissions back to us, um, you know, usually after Thanksgiving, so that we could have some, uh, base document, uh, put together by Christmas or New Year's, it's really a nice way to spend the holidays.
Oh, yeah. That's it?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, my God.
Don't push me.
I was gonna ask you, uh, you went to the fiscal policy committee.
Did, yes.
Can you give just a brief update, I mean, is it pretty much run along the same lines as what Tom was talking about as far as the?
Well, the state of the state is less grim than the state of the nation, we'll put it that way. The, uh, the, uh, tax collection and other revenue benchmarks of the state, they exceeded those last fiscal year, uh, which is good. Um, the early collection data from this particular year, the first two, uh, couple of months were off, but September is well above projections, so, um, so last year lottery was up, tax collections were up, so it bodes reasonably well for the state of the state budget this year, um, however, um, keep in mind, uh, we're not too sure what the, what the, um, priorities are gonna be of the administration, I think if you're looking at maybe a four to four and a half percent overall, um, increase in local aid accounts, uh, that's right now what is being suggested as would be a reasonable target, um, but it's, it's way too early to know what priorities the governor and the legislature are gonna have from a budgetary standpoint this year, certainly, we hope that we're at the top of the list. As you know, MMA means more money always, and we try to keep that, keep that going.
Well, we're only in September, so really don't know.
Well, Jack, since you forfeited your time to Rick, we move on to Sarah.
Beautiful. Thank you. I noticed that we, there will be approximately $200,000 in personal property tax. I think that's the estimated receipts from the new N-Star project, and I'm, I'm hoping and assuming that that money will be put into the build, town building stabilization fund. I'm presuming that's the mechanism, in, in order to fund, just to be real clear, in order to fund the debt service on any town buildings that we may take on.
Which project is this? Is this the new polls that they're putting in?
It's the 325K, the new line that they're running all the way out to the Cape.
Oh, okay, okay.
They're doing a lot of clearing, if you've noticed, on some of the rightaways.
The reason why I ask is because we currently have a project going on in South Calvo where they're redoing all the poles and the lines, so there, there must be some
Correct.
personal property revenue being generated from that also, right?
There would be. I'm always hesitant to say, put out a number, though. I mean, I know what an estimate is
Well, that was the estimate.
I would just want to be careful.
And, and my, my bet point, I guess, is only not that exact amount of money, but whatever's there
Right.
that we might be able to use
Dedicated.
for that debt service, correct.
Well, our intention in, in the budget process would be to carve that out in addition to last year's carve-out. Obviously, we can't tell, we can only recommend to town meeting how to spend their money, but we could certainly, from a bu, from a budget model standpoint, it is our intention to, to follow the, the path that we at least seemed to agree to last year.
You can almost follow the format. You could leave it in there and just have it as an article. Last year's building block, and then this year's, so it'll be approximately $300,000. I'll be putting away for
$260, I know.
Sarah, anything else?
That was it. I just wanted to Obviously, it's up to town meeting, but.
Ms. Marone?
Ms. Marone, I just want to ask if we can put update on the recreation committee on for the agenda next time, because I know there had been issues that had been brought out to all of us, and it would be nice to get an update.
We certainly can do that. We've been working in the background to try and clear up some of the things that were going on, and I remain cautiously optimistic that the things that were discussed about moving that committee forward will take place shortly, if, if they haven't already, so.
Well, if you feel it's, you know, ready to be
If, if not, then we're going to have to take some other measures, and I think that
Okay.
But we, we will presume to put it on the agenda unless
Yeah.
at the time when the chairman feels it's inappropriate or not quite ready, we'll
That makes sense.
And if you haven't got the change in leadership by then, then I'll make another telephone call and see what the delay is, and if, if not, we'll just have to move forward in another direction, that's all.
And I just want to say to all the residents out there, my summer hours at More Dogs has come to an end. I had a great time, and I want to thank all the residents who did come and visit me at More Dogs, and I encourage everybody to visit More Dogs all the time, whether I'm there or not, and my Tuesday hours will continue, and in the near future, I will publicize what my fall secondary hours will be as well.
If people knew that you were actually buying, you would have had a bigger crowd.
No, I tried to give the hint, come and have breakfast and coffee with me, but
Well, there was a crowd already waiting for you in the room today.
Jack was there, no, I'm only kidding. I never saw you.
She had the Hells Angels down there as followers.
No, it's a, it's a nice, relaxed setting to talk about, you know, concerns that you have about the town, and I do have the more formal office hours as well on Tuesdays.
And it doesn't hurt that they have great food.
Well, and that, that's it, you know, you, you learn about the restaurants and the businesses in this town, and More Dogs has been here for a number of years, and, you know, everybody jokes, saying you're going to have hot dogs in the morning, and some people don't even realize that they make the best breakfast sandwich in town, so.
I prefer pasta in the morning.
Couple of places might disagree.
Now we're going to get complaints. Now, yeah, now we're going to get complaints from every other establishment. Thanks, Helen.
I guess I know. I apologize. What I'm trying to do is emphasize that More Dogs doesn't have just dogs in the, More